All right, at this time, I'm going to call this special meeting on City of Crescent City to order. Please hold the roll.
Councilmember Allen.
You're.
Councilmember Scott.
I'm here.
Councilmember Smith.
There.
Mayor Proton Wright.
Here.
And Mayor Green.
I am here, thank you. At this time, let's stand and pledge allegiance to the flag of our great country. Ready and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we are going to open up public comment. Any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matters in the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-adjourned items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which can include placed on a future agenda. All comments shall be directed towards the entire council. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from the mayor, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes, and then you will be given an additional three minutes for each agenda item. Is there any public comment at this time? There's a couple different ways you can get your public comment to us. If you'd like to phone it in, you can. It's all right. It's like, who wants to be a millionaire, right? Phone it in. You can dial two five three two one five eight seven eight two with the webinar ID of eight two one six nine five nine eight three four eight. Or if you're with us on Zoom, just raise your hand. Any public comment? Seeing none in the room, doesn't look like we have any online. We will move on then to our ceremonial item, the oath of the Office of Police Officer Owen. Our new police officer coming into the department today.
Mayor Green, members of the council, we have our police chief, Chief Griffin, with our newest officer, Wade Owen.
Congratulations.
Sure, whatever you want, sir. Mr. Mayor, City Council, tonight, we present, I want you to take a look at the back of the room, pretty entire department's here, so it's a wee thing, it's not a big thing. I am honored to do this. I had, I'll introduce you first. Wade Allen Ironwing Owen is Tallawea, Dene Nation, Nation native. He wasn't born here, but he was raised here since two, two or three. In Delano County, had prior law enforcement experience here. However, before that, he started his service in our nation's military and air force. He was a military police officer for six years, and then he joined the A-7 Special Operations Command and did several things for four years that we can't talk about, as he was a Phoenix Raven. That's as much as I can say about it. He's also currently active Air National Guard, has been for six years. He was a little surprised at it, total seventeen years total, everything he did. He's active, he's going to be leading us here in about a month for a couple of weeks for his active duty and coming back. With that also, he's been married sixteen years to his wife, has five children. He's very excited to join us, I'm excited to welcome him here. I got the pleasure to meet Mr. Owen, 2015, was it? When somebody made the unfortunate mistake of burglarizing one of his sheds, and I saw how motivated the person he was to track that person down and find his property, work with him on that. We got most of the background correctly. So with that, I would present him to the city clerk for his oath of office.
State name.
I, Wade Allen Ironwing Owen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true and faithful allegiance.
That I will bear true and faithful allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon for which I'm about to enter.
For the Crescent City Police Department.
For the Crescent City Police Department.
Hi, it's Wade, he's here, his family, she's asking me to finish bash. One thing I forgot to mention is that I've had 2015 Zebra experiences, and unfortunately for one resident, they made a bad mistake, they found out how quick he was on his initial foot pursuit. Very motivated individual, I think he's going to fit very well in our family, so.
Thank you for the opportunity, everybody. I think law enforcement is a calling, as soon as I stepped into it, first in the military and then civilian wise, I knew I found a home, this is what I wanted to do. My prior law enforcement experience kind of brought me here to the PD, and after talking to the chief and everybody else that's part of the PD, they all have the same story, it's like a big family. And I've been there a short time, but I can already tell that that's what it is. And so far, I am happy to be there, and I look forward to what the future will bring. Thank you.
Thank you.
That we will move on to our consent calendar. We have an MOU with the Family Resource Center of the Redwoods regarding health recovery programs with their SB 13. Question, your comments? Okay. Look for a motion to approve our consent. I'll make a motion to approve consent count. It is, I, yeah. Second, second, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comments on the consent calendar? See no public comment. Clerk, please hold up.
Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Scott.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wright.
Yes.
And Mayor Green.
Yes, thank you. And then moving on to our new business, is item number three, Val. Poly, Polyam, I hope I'm saying that right. Pull in, pull in.
Pollyann.
Pollyann. Artwork donation.
Well, thank you, Mayor, members of the council, so we have Ashley Taylor, our Economic Development slash Recreation Director here, as well as Bridget Lacy, Grants Coordinator slash Economic Development Coordinator, to take the lead on this, on this unique opportunity. This is an item that I certainly didn't have on the radar as far as, you know, future council agenda items, but sometimes these things all fall in your lap and need to discuss it and then consider, you know, the options, the opportunities, and really what's before us. So let me get this presentation fired up and then I'll step away. All right, Ms. Taylor, these are all yours.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Proton and members of the council. Staff are here this evening to share with you a unique and once-in-a-lifetime art donation that the city became aware of here recently. I would like to provide to us some background on the artist and the art itself, and that also opened up for discussion with council in regards to how we're going to manage that potential donation to the city. So I would first like to talk a little bit about how this came up. So on May 18th, the city was contacted by Hambro Group and was informed that the artist, Val Pollyannan, had decided that he would like to donate his life's work to the city that remained in his possession. So on the Hambro property, there are about four containers containing roughly 500-plus pieces of art. And we've been informed that the work must be removed from those boxes by before September 1st, and that is due to the fact that there is some donor will be occurring at that time. So a little bit about Val himself, Val immigrated here from Ukraine, and his backstory is that he was forced into military service with the Russian Army. He found himself in a ship on the outside of Guam, a Russian military ship. He jumped off the ship, swam to shore, and found asylum in the United States. He had papers signed by Ronald Reagan, so he had said. And he has since migrated to Crescent City, spent his life making art here, and really being a community member here at Crescent City. And those of you who are familiar with his work, they are made out of a multitude of medias. They include paintings, sculptures, mosaic, and drawings, and they just range from all kinds of different materials that made those pieces. It's actually very, very spectacular. So I also want to assure you guys that over the weekend, I was visiting my parents, and I asked my mom if she was familiar with this art. And she and I shared some stories about traveling through Crescent City, and she remembered the art, and she's the one who has said to me that she felt that that roadside attraction was an iconic piece of Crescent City history. And so when she said that, I really latched on to that. She's right, it is an iconic roadside attraction here in Crescent City. It has been here for over twenty years, it is easily recognizable, and its presence is indeed iconic. So here are some examples of Val's art. So you can see they're made from materials, the one farthest to the right has some different computer pieces on it. There's wood, there's metal, all kinds of different types of sculptures. So knowing that we have this opportunity in front of us, what can we potentially do with this art? So the easiest answer would be, we just don't accept it. We let Hambro put it in the trash, we don't take it, it's not our, it's not ours to deal with anymore, it's gone. Or we could look at the art collection as a potential use for the City of Crescent City. I think that this is a good time for staff to start thinking in terms of one, three, and five-year plans in regards to addressing our economic development strategic action plan. In that plan, we've identified many priorities for the city, including economic development, priorities such as Crescent City being a music and arts capital. This would go a long way in helping to lay a foundation to support that effort, and in general, supporting the development of a strategic arts plan. So there are many examples of other communities across the country using art as an economic driver. It can be used in ways that support the increase in business to, or the revenue to businesses, and increased TOT taxes, and in general, it enhances the quality of life for citizens. So with that being said, I also recently, in the last couple of days, was speaking with our marketing consultant when they left Realor, and she was incredibly excited by this potential opportunity to utilize art as a cultural tourism opportunity to Crescent City. She got very excited about it, we had some discussion about ways in which she could really tell that story and present it to different publications, tourism magazines, and get some attention to Crescent City. And cultural tourism itself is a real growing economic driver in many communities. People do travel for the specific purpose of looking for attractions that are culturally based, whether it's arts, performance, music, all kinds of different things. And I think in addition to that, people really like unique and interesting attractions to come to, ones that you don't see everywhere. So Lynette was so excited about this particular prospect that she sat in my office and literally looked up some statistics in the moment and gave those to me. So here are some just brief statistics related to arts and cultural tourism, and something I read through them briefly. So each year, about seventy-four-six of all-American major travelers, about 130 million adults, participate in cultural activities while traveling, contributing more than $171 billion into the US economy. American cultural travelers spend, on average, 60% more than other types of travelers, about 1,300 per trip compared to $800 per trip for other travelers. And generally, they also take more trips per year than non-cultural travelers. Of the 110 million American adults who traveled more than 50 miles one way in 2012, 32.5 million extended their trip in order to participate in cultural, arts, heritage, or historic activities or events. Of those who did so, 40% extended their trip by one or more nights. Foreign visitors to the United States partake in arts and cultural activities. And in 2016, 28.2% of those foreign visitors went to an American art museum of galleries, while 16 attended a concert, play, or musical. And so I think what I do want to kind of say about that too is that, you know, there are a lot of ways in which that art could be used for a cultural tourism purpose. And I was kind of thinking in terms of we could potentially develop something like a arts and culture walk. We have a lot of things in development right now, including the House of Culture for Beachfront Park and the Interpretive Garden for Tallawea, Tallawea people. There are a lot of ways in which we could really expand on those efforts that we're already working on right now. So I also put together for you guys a couple of examples of other communities who have used art as a way of driving their economic progress. So one of those was in Williston, Carolina, or yes, North Carolina, where a park and museum was developed to dedicate the work of artist Wallace Simpson. And these pieces that are next sculptures called Whirly Gigs, they were originally in Baltimore, Maryland. And what happened there was the artist was, he was originally maintaining them and keeping them going, but then he got to a stage in his life where he was no longer able to do that. So a grassroots effort came to, came to life, and those pieces were moved to Wilson, North Carolina, put in a historic district in the community, and then run by a nonprofit to benefit the community and tourists. These pieces are pretty phenomenal to watch. If you guys ever have time, I encourage you to go to their website and check out a live stream that they have going. You can actually see them in action, they are fully moving all the time, it's really fun to see and really unique for their community. Another example is in Somerville, Georgia, with the Chautauqua County. So Chautauqua County purchased an outdoor art exhibit titled Paradise Gardens and the work of Howard Finster. He is one of America's most widely known and prolific self-taught artists. Chautauqua County obtained a grant to purchase the property and then leased the property to Paradise Garden Foundation. And basically, what happened there was that they were a highly disadvantaged community, and they were able to really uplift their, their county by installing this art or taking on this as an economic driver in their community. It is now a world-known, a worldwide-known exhibit with over 25,000 visitors from 33 counties having visited since 2012. So that being said, there's obviously a lot of ways in which we could use this, but what would that look like moving forward for the city? So some thoughts that staff have on our end is that we could, well, first of all, accept the donation. We could temporarily store the art in the former Bank of America building. We could potentially exhibit a portion of the art. We could work with an organization to preserve and permanently house the collection. And on that note, actually, Director Olson has already done some groundwork, working with the, or talking with the Kohler Foundation. Bridgette and I have also spoken with them, and they are very interested in the art and helping to work with us to preserve it and find homes for it. It will take about a year or more for them to get here to do that, because they have a lot on their plate. But it is a real, a real possibility that they would come and step in to assist with that effort. Another option is to retain a portion of the art and keep it as a city asset. And then we would also like to ask council to direct staff to return with options for strategic plans to leverage the art to promote economic development and tourism within the City of Crescent City. So one of the thoughts that has been tossed around, if the art does get stored in the former Bank of America building, there is the possibility of making that space something that is, could be open to the public to come and view the art during specific times. So Ms. Lacy did a lot of work putting together, or she photoshopped these spaces so that you could kind of get an idea, feel for what that might look like and how we could do that. So this is a panorama view, but this is of the lottie area in that Bank of America building. And these would be some of the interior spaces lining the walls with the art. And then one other thought that we have too is we were able to get some drone footage taken of the current location of the boxes. It's very, it's very well-rounded, it's from all aerial views, and it's a really good, I think, documentation of what this process has been and what the state of the art is currently. And so we could show that drone footage, because, you know, at that point, after the art's been moved, there, you know, this could show people what it used to look like or it used to be. So I could speak all day about potential ideas, what we could do, and, you know, have, have really fun discussion around that. But at the end of the day, there's some logistics around how we would make that happen. So the bottom line of what it would take in order for us to take that donation on is we would need to utilize some staff time in order to move the pieces of art and from their current location in the conics boxes to the former Bank of America building. We don't have an exact estimate of how much time that would take in order to do so. We would also be heavily pursuing getting some volunteers to assist in that effort. I think that there could be some real community buy-in on this effort, because, you know, this is not only about having an asset for the City of Crescent City, but it's also about honoring the artist and preserving his work. Because if the city doesn't step in and take it, there's a very high likelihood that it's not going to be, is not going to be taken and preserved and, you know, kept alive. It may end up trash. I think that would be a very unfortunate way for that art to end. So that being said, staff recommendations are to accept the donated art, to temporarily store it in the former Bank of America building, and to direct staff to return with options for council to discuss, to discuss involving leveraging the art to promote economic development and tourism within the City of Crescent City. So with that, I will open it up for discussion.
Thank you for your presentation. Council have any ideas, any questions for staff on this? Art donation. Potential for economic development. So to, to move the art, it's got to be like carefully wrapped and transported so it's not damaged. So it's going to be really time-consuming.
Potentially, depending on which pieces, there are some that are more delicate than others, and would take some more consideration. Some of the pieces are, you know, they're framed work that, you know, I think would be easier to move. Some of the larger sculptures, obviously, would take some additional consideration, yes.
And what happens to the containers?
Hambro Group, it would like to keep them, so they want to keep them for their use.
Guys, got anything?
Did you get it, did anyone else get a chance to look at them?
Oh, yes, it's amazing.
I did, I would like to see us keep it and do something with it. But I want to, I don't want it to just sit, I'd rather, I want to see it get put to use and see a finished product with it.
Yeah, definitely, I like the display idea. Yeah, there's so many of the pieces, the paintings at least for sure, that I don't, I mean, we could probably rotate that art on a weekly basis out of the space that we probably use for it in the eventual city hall, and we probably wouldn't even get through it all in a year. My idea was, because I hate getting rid of real estate, because it's a great investment, is not getting rid of the current city hall and doing something with that eventually, personally.
So the good news about this particular situation at the moment is, we, all we need to really decide on tonight is whether or not we want to accept the art. And after that point, staff can take the time to really flesh out some options to bring back to you, so that you can consider some very well-thought-out, fiscally-sound decisions. You would know what the impact would be on staff and the financial impacts, and also in what ways it could realistically work within the community and engage the public, engage tourism. So tonight, if, you know, we can talk as much as you would like to in regards to the potential uses of the art, but the only direction that we do need tonight is to accept the art and then to return with, with other ideas.
Actually, just thinking about some of the logistics a little bit. So this needs to be removed from the Hambro property by the end of August, basically. It's going to be time-consuming to, to move all those pieces, take the care that it's going to require. We're first thing, and we can just try to secure it in the conics boxes and then move the conics boxes. That's not going to be the way to do this. So what we probably also need is just a modest budget right now for us to go and rent, probably move trucks. So it doesn't have to be a lot of money, we do have $30,000 in this year's budget for economic development that was kind of slated for soul, and we could use, could have that needed by, you know, how like council direction, you know, is, but it will lead some budget to accommodate that. But also, you know, I've discussed with Ashley and Bridgette, we can also ask volunteers to help us with this, with this move. Our public works, because they're not professional, our movers, obviously, and this is a really busy time for them right now. So I mean, we could try to muster up a group of volunteers to try to assist us, you know, in impacting them, and then possibly the, you know, city forces could move the art pieces or some combination of that.
So what, what kind of a budget would you like to see for just moving it, for accepting it, and, and getting it moved, just to start, let's start with that? And then how early will it be getting moved? Because we're in a public meeting talking about this art in the area, and I'm worried about it getting pillaged already.
Well, I, I think that we should maybe give direction to accept the art, because it needs to be preserved, and that'll be our main, the main thing we do tonight. And then perhaps give direction to staff to maybe see how much it would cost for professional members even that have been using our busy.
I, I agree with you, but I think we need to give some broader direction tonight, because we're, and my understanding is, as we're going to council our July 5th meeting, we don't want to, we don't want staff to, to not be able to move forward if the opportunity presents itself until, you know, for three, two more weeks.
Because we don't know, it could take a whole month to move 500 pieces of art.
I, I think that, that whether, this is all about economic development. I mean, I have some really strong opinions on this, that's why I said something earlier before she got to our economic development director. But, so I have no problem with using money out of the 30,000 that we have marked. If we need to allocate $5,000 to, so that we, as Councilmember Allen said, that we need to hire some people to help with this, and they may have to be higher than that, but I think it certainly, I think that's a start that it can get us going and give us some time if staff needs to come back and say, well, hey, we need 10, or whatever we need to, to, to get it done.
Because we're in the peak of our season, I mean, we can't use our own city employees, I mean, they're.
It's going to be hard, it's, it's tough, because we're coming into 4th of July and the swing of summer and.
But, but Councilmember Smith is right, the, the awareness that, that Mr. Pollyannan is gone is out there. And the longer this stuff sits with no one around, the, the greater the risk is that, that it could be damaged, stolen, or whatever. So I, I think that, I think it's a good idea to, to, to look into, you know, hiring some people. And it's, and this is, you know, my first thought is getting volunteers from our art community. And while that has some value and helped to, on a certain extent, most of our, our community that I know has not been moving art like this. This stuff is a mask, so while they can give us some good guidance, right? They may not be able to do the manpower, but they can come in and say, you should do this, this, and this, but we're still going to need muscles to, to get it, yeah.
Volunteers to assist.
Yeah, yeah.
Have we had, we have a, Chief Griffin, we haven't had any real issues out there, I take it?
That's county jurisdiction, that's outside the city limits.
Okay.
Where that is on top beach.
Yeah.
Yeah, our jurisdiction is back before the Big Bo Basin.
Rich, you're experiencing for happy as well, was a.
A real big problem area. As far as there, no. Around there, yes, there's several different camps there. There's actually, I don't know, it's just use there, not frequently, but every now and then, yeah.
Yeah, so a bunch of five thousand dollars will be a, you know, a a good start. It would allow us to secure some resources, start the process, then we need to come back to council. Depending on the timing, right, we could always call a special meeting, we really needed something or ask for additional funding at the eighteenth after already started the process.
So we're, so five is enough, you think, to start with?
Five is a good, five is a good start.
I I was thinking more of it.
Yeah, I I have no problem with upping it to ten out of the, out of that budget line item. If we, if we find, you know, mid-year that 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 we have some other economic development oriented things that we need to pursue. We can always do a budget amendment and add that money back into that line item. So I think, I think allocating, you know, giving staff the direction to 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 use from that line item is fine.
To use for that line, maybe up to ten thousand.
Sure.
We can report back on all the, you know, who should come in last.
And in long term, it's good use of the building while it's in the architectural and engineering phase. But it will have to be staffed, right? You can't have a museum rent itself.
True.
That was gonna be my next question, what's the plan? So, yeah, that that in the long term after it's moved, so.
So absolutely, we could return with a plan for if that was a direction that council chooses to have staff, you know, go that way. We can have a plan for how we would actually operate an exhibit because that will take some considerations and especially.
I think it has great potential. I agree with. Also, I think that if we do pull trigger on this, we do need to put a. A number behind it to to make sure that we can actually do what we say we want to do. So. You think ten thousand is too much right now?
No, I don't think it's too much. I think it's a good start to to address the transportation, get it into our possession and get it secured safely. And Bank of America makes the most sense. I I just, the 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 potential here. It it, you know, I can't overstate this enough, having spent the last seven plus years talking tourism and marketing. This, this, this could be our niche. I mean, I talked to to Taylor about this. I I really believe that. We don't have that, even regionally. Trees of Mystery is clearly a destination. Ocean World is an attraction. There's a difference. That doesn't mean that Ocean World is not important, very, very important to our economy. People who come and come to Crescent City, especially their first time, if they have children, they're going to go to Ocean World. And we want them to go to Ocean World, but it's an attraction, not a destination. Trees of Mystery is a destination. I believe the Val Polyannan collection has the potential to be a destination, puts us on the map. That's going to cost money, it's going to take time, it's going to have to be marketed in a way that that, you know, that that communicates that. But the potential could be beyond any, this could be the the downtown revitalization. If I don't know if you guys had time to read the whole thing about what happened at Wilson and property values and everything else that happened. It was their downtown revitalization. I mean, there's comments in here about how locals change their opinion about downtown. They didn't used to go downtown for anything. Now they go downtown and not only are they going downtown because of the really big thing, but they're going downtown now they're shopping. And now, and now property owners who couldn't get anybody to rent their their shops, their their business, their their open vacancies. Not not only are they filling up, but but rents had almost doubled of what they could charge because there's a, people want to be downtown. You know, and and I I guess I will just, I I will just say, sometimes you have to be able to think outside the box to be able to really capture. These kind of opportunities. Is this art my thing? I don't, I don't know. I don't know what, I don't know what it is. I really don't. It's so eclectic. And that in itself is what makes it so valuable, is the fact that it's not one thing. It is so eclectic that that once it's on the map. And I'll even go as far, I know this is our future discussion, I'll even go as far as saying, as crazy as it may sound. The Bank of America building as the as the 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 location of the the Val Polyannan Art Museum or Art Collection. Maybe worth more to the city in the long term economic development than as a city hall. I know that's not what any of our plans would be. It would, it would have been something I would have never said until I saw the volume of what is here and looked at it from an economic development standpoint. Is the old city hall, current city hall, okay, another option, sure. But it doesn't have the downtown same connection that Bank of America does. But we may be looking at other other buildings in the downtown area that could be. Anyway, I'll I'll just stop there because I know that's the future discussion, but I just can't reiterate.
No, it's a real thing. I'm I'm one of those culture enthusiasts that travel to tour art. I I do it. It's it's, I I don't, I don't think it's as uncommon as you think.
No, it's not, no.
I've seen many, many, many art exhibits and museums and I love the Eureka Art Block. I mean, that's great stuff down there, too.
I think one of the biggest things that's super compelling to me about this is the story and behind this man. This, that he he took the risk to jump off of a Russian military ship.
Okay, that's movie stuff.
To escape.
That's a movie, right?
authoritarianism.
Yeah.
To freedom. That that's that's beauty. That that's a beautiful story that that he was able to accomplish that and and then. Chose Crescent City out of all the different places he could have lived in the United States.
Well, I I can just add to that, too. I mean, frankly, what we're doing right here right now is is part of that. This whole process is part of the story that could be told and that is part of what would attract people.
So we're taking picture.
The whole process. Lots and lots, so be ready.
Once we accepted the gift, so the attorney rises it up, is that it legally, it's ours, that's it?
These are spreads.
I know, but that's my concern is it doesn't really say too much on the piece of paper that is what's left.
Yes. So so I had, you know, someone that said, I I had a concern my first, I said, well, it's nice. It's not not typically the language that we use. And I did come up with something more robust, but given the circumstances, you know, Mr. Pollyanna is no longer in the area. We're able to get a hold of him. The only evidence we have of his intent is this piece of paper and what he communicated to him wrote. So, you know, if we don't take it, it may end up in the trash.
Yeah.
And, you know, for for. So that so the city will accept officially accept our and then take it into its possession, it will be the owners. For somebody to challenge that. What are they going to challenge it with? You know, I mean, you don't. If we don't take it, it's it's going, you know, in the trash. So the only way to really even keep it alive is is to accept it. It's by official action of the council and then by taking possession of it.
I think it, I think it would be a good idea if if we can find any way to to make that connection and just send some, some kind of, some kind of document that we. If if it's possible, if it can, it can. But something that he could notarize that has, that basically reiterates his intent. So that we can put that on on file, but we can't.
We haven't, I, my understanding is we haven't had any luck.
Okay, as long as we've made our good faith effort and document that we have done that, I think that's important as well.
We're still trying.
Yeah.
Very good. Okay, um, well, it comes back to the question of the art, do we accept it? And I think we should, so and I will, I will entertain a motion for that.
So we accept that the art temporarily historic in the Bank of America building. Provide a a a initial budget for transition of the art of ten thousand dollars. Out of the economic development chart line item. And direct staff to come back with future discussions and options of what we're going to do with this.
We have a motion in a second. We have a motion in a second. Do we have any public comment online or in the room? It's seen no public comment, please pull.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Inscore.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, thank you. Excellent. I look forward to having more discussions on this and please let me know when you're going to be moving. I would love to be there to help.
Fantastic. We will definitely invite all members of council.
Excellent. Okay, with that, we will move on. Our council has hit into items. Do we have any legislative matters? No, okay. City manager, what do you have a thing for us?
Just a couple of updates on some grants. So the Congressman, Congressman Hupman had included the Front Street project in his appropriations. Recommendation, so that is moving forward. That's the first step. However, we did just receive a clarification on that. So we asked for, I think it was five, two, six million to be able to do those four blocks. We said it was scalable, going down, you know, basically per each block. We found out that although it is moving forward, it is moving forward with the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand. So that was a little bit of a surprise to us, given the the order back to the scale. Over seven hundred and fifty thousand, still seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we were awarded that, so we're, you know, we still lock materials, we'll still do all of those things. So as we're moving forward, we do get that, then we'll have to take a look and see exactly what can we do with that. Does that, does that get us close enough to the next block possibly? If, you know, my dress dollars are still there to, you know, to to reevaluate some available funds there, transportation commission. Those have to look at because it's not this clear, yes, this gets us another block piece. Can enhance, you know, the the first two blocks that we're doing, can we look at transit improvements? Can we look at some of the other landscape, you know, even, you know, the art type pieces, pedestrian improvements, things like that. So we'll love to take, that's an update on that front. Great, right? It's all about perspective, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is 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 wonderful. So so that's where we're at on that one. Still fingers crossed on the rural recreation tourism. So we haven't heard anything back on that. It should be in the day. They were supposed to announce it in the spring. We're now right in the middle of summer. So hopefully that one comes through and we still have the race grant, which is out there for Front Street as well. Speaking of grants, Chief Griffin has been busy as usual and actually received word that we will be getting some additional funding for K nine. Chief, you want to talk a little bit about that?
So, yeah, so what's the city council direction? You wanted a second canine, that's in the fiscal budget for next year. The price of the canine is fifteen thousand dollars. We've had that selected through our group. They actually went overseas, selected them, being trained right now, and we'll be looking to receive the dog probably at the end of July-ish. Hopefully, depending on how training goes, we have selected our canine officer, Daniel Sanders, who's our current school resource officer. We've already worked with school admin, make sure everything, they're excited to get the dog and have the interaction everyone too. But with that, also just looking at grants, one came across through Chief Dana Fortuna, I got some paperwork, is the AKC reunite grant. And what it is, is an opportunity that, yeah, working through the Lost Coast Kennel Club of Humboldt, you have to work with the local club, that's the closest one. If you secure twenty five hundred dollars in private donations, they will match it up to seventy five hundred dollars for a total of ten thousand dollars. That goes directly to the purchase only of the canine. So we have it in the grant for the budget next year for that. Now we can utilize some of that for the future of the program or if we need different stuff, equipment, everything. So that has been secured, we'll come back with, back with it. I've secured private donor for twenty five hundred dollars. That check's already been delivered to the Lost Coast Kennel Club. It's in the process out of about two hours ago, being deposited and transferred by them to the national program. And then they'll be sending us a check. The only requirement of that, of course, which will need to be approved by you is you have to place the AKC reunite sticker on the vehicle that the dog is assigned to. So, yeah, so that's ten thousand dollars of donated money that's coming to our program, which we can then utilize some of that budget for other stuff with the K nine program. Potentially expand it more or just different equipment, train.
That's awesome. That is great.
And I'll, I'll disclose the donors at the next meeting, so the public opinion and everything, just right now figuring out how far to go, so.
All right. Excellent. Good news.
Excellent work by the chief there and, you know, really exciting news for the next canine coming on, the officer, all of those things, and it was some good stuff on that front.
Mr. Weir, I can add, that grant isn't a one-time thing either. They worked with all local programs, the fire advisory, Sheriff Scott of it. He's looking at adding a canine to their program. But if the city council for some reason decides next time we bring to you that a third dog, I can get the same grant for that, so that'd be, that cover two thirds of the cost of it. And there, another camp, I just wanted to make sure of that.
The question, chief, so does that, does that include any type of of canine officer? So if it was just a drug dog or if it was just a search and rescue dog, I mean, could it, does it encompass the entire gamut of what canine work could be?
Working police canine dog and just, the only thing is it has to go to the purchase and that's it.
Okay.
The dog, you can't towards anything else. But again, so, in fact, he's a dual certification dog, narcotics and apprehension, also some tracking. So, yeah, but it could also go forward. And I read the grant for it thoroughly. It's a working police canine. Honestly, it just has to be approved by the Lost Coast Kennel Club, maybe once a month, and then so they would adopt us. And then it's up to me to find the donor of the twenty five hundred dollars. The donor I I located, I've located, I've been working with for a while, is more than happy to, again, donate if we decide in the future.
That's awesome. Thank you, chief. What a great opportunity.
Good stuff on that one. I did want to update the council on the pool projects. That was a, out of a discussion at our last council meeting. Staff has been working very hard on that project, going through all of the details with John's controls. Goodness, we have come to terms of basically everything. And we'll be able to bring that back before the council at the July eighteenth meeting. And talking to John's controls because of the size of the the pool project and the amount of overhead and whatnot that's involved in that, as well as the water project. They both need to go together. That was one of the, one of the line items of the contract that we had originally struck, where they said that the the two projects would need to go together. They have now clarified that they do need to go together from their costing standpoint. So we will present the water project as well as the pool project with this couple of work in the pool project that does address all of our concerns. The duck cleaning, the 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 building envelope piece of it, the, you know, the conditioning and the administration areas, the showers, all those things that we were concerned about. Have been addressed and it is our indication at this point that the price will be, will be held approximately one point one million for the pool project, which is actually less than what was presented to council back in. I think it was in March when we first discussed this. And so, yep, so that project is is in the works and will be brought back with the water project with the also initial or additional discussion of the financing of the water side of it as well. And then we'll have both agreements before the council on the. So those are the big project updates. Staff, as you probably have noticed, can't say enough about city staff and the job they're doing this Fourth of July. They're they're really working hard, we've brought on our temporary seasonal people, so I'm not today in curves and and getting the park ready. That we have for the one person, Jonathan Getke, has really taken a a keen interest in trying to beautify some of the smaller details. So you see a lot of the, like, the ballards around that are, you know, they're painted on the city blue, where they now has an icon of the city logo itself. Or the lighthouse that he'll put on, some of the stencils on, and so just some of those little details. So crews, crews are really working hard to make the city really shine this Fourth of July. We'll also say we're, can't say enough about Chamber, John Chambers doing this Fourth of July is set up to be a great one. And so it should be a great time down in Vitra. Police department will have their booth there, they'll have information for people who have ended up lost and found. They'll have child ID kits and really have a strong police presence, fire department is going to do waterball again this year, as well as have an additional. The fire department did demonstration, so they're going to be able to demonstrate the jobs of life. So they'll have a car that'll be there, they will actually do a live extrication of of what it would simulate to be in a car accident, have to get extracted using the Jaws of Life. And so they'll also have a booth there for kids to be able to to spray the fire hose, as well as try out some of the turnouts and different things like that. Really try to prove it to let people know, you know, this is a really strong department that has all the skills of a professional department. But it is volunteer and they can be a part of this as well. And that's what we we need from our community. So for good for us. That's it for the city manager. That's it. We're considering manager.
All right, thank you. Do we have anything from, uh, our council? So, uh, Councilmember Smith, do you have anything for us?
No, I don't, but not tonight.
All right. Yeah, Councilmember Altman, do you have anything for us?
No, sir.
All right, Mayor Tim. All right, I'll just say, uh, thank you, uh, all of our staff for your hard work on the night's meetings. I know it takes time for these meetings to all come together. Um, and I'd like to thank all of our staff for their hard work, uh, coming on, uh. For, for the July and for the summer season. I know that, that, that's quite a bit of work to get the city looking its best for all of our visitors coming into town. I would just like to say to everyone in the city, please try to be careful over the Fourth of July. Uh, it's no fun to, to go to the hospital with the emergency room on a holiday. Uh, or any day for that matter, but especially on holiday, we should be having fun with your family. So.
Mayor, we did, uh, we did push for a few others to come on this meeting and as we discussed before. We're, do we have council consensus to cancel the meeting on the.
Oh, that's right. Um, do we have, uh, consensus to cancel the meeting on July the?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. All right, it looks like we have a consensus. Excellent. So I, I hope our staff will enjoy the extra day off not having to worry about it after the Fourth of July. Happy Independence Day to everyone. Hope everyone has a good, has a good evening. I will adjourn this meeting until July eighteenth at six PM at the.